Due to proclamation to those who are here just for the proclamation. Dr. Brown, if you'd like to join me up here and whoever else would like to have.
I'd like for Josh Harper, who's the manager of the appraisers in the county auditor's office to join me, as well as all of the certified appraisers, whether the private and the public sector who are here, and our appraisal system and partners as well. Everybody come on up. In the county auditor's office, there are certified appraisers. Jerry Craig, he's in the back there, Noel Saunders, and Josh Harper, as well as Robyn Baltaser, who is not here today. And Chris Wagner and the support staff from the auditor's office can come up too, because they're here to help support the appraisers and their everyday work with assessing property. January 7th is the day. Very appreciative to have everybody here. The three major accomplishments for this year were a triennial, 99.6 million of new construction, and the teamwork that they showed with the board of commissioners.
All right, well, here's the. Whereas, we look forward to acknowledging the contributions private and public real estate appraisers and the support systems make on a daily basis for the county and our stakeholders and partners, which include businesses, banks, realtors, and other governments. We are continuing the tradition of celebrating leadership in real estate assessment and in bringing awareness to its impact in county operations. January 7th, National Real Estate Appraiser Appreciation Day. And looking forward to the occasion, recognizing professionals who help safeguard the integrity of real estate transactions and the health of the real estate economy. More information on the appraisal foundation is available at www.craebelfoundation.org. For the very good kind of board commissioners, it's hereby formally in place to respect for and recognition of January 7th as Real Estate Appraiser Appreciation Day. We call upon everyone in Fairfield County to observe this day to increase recognition, respect, and support for real estate appraisers and their support systems. County auditor will be sending notes of thanks to all real estate assessment professionals. They'll be sharing some more information too. Sign this. There you go.
Thank you so much, I'm celebrating.
Okay, take two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thanks, everybody. So we understand that we've got a new employee in our IT department that maybe he's going to introduce.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is Gregory Irvine. He started with us yesterday morning in the IT department. So I think it's helpful for, you know, face the day as you begin to hear him answering the phones. I won't put him on the spot, but I did just learn that he's a Florida boy. So surprisingly enough, he decides to move to the Midwest as well. We appreciate having him. And he comes to us from Purple Medical Center. High praise from the folks that I know there in terms of us.
So is he the guy that I'm going to call? Because I'm the most technologically ridiculous person.
Oh, you're the most?
Well, I think so. Anyway, welcome to the team. We're happy to have you and look forward to your service to the county. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. And he sneaks out because the orientation is shortly out of record.
All right.
Happy to.
Thanks. And we have a certificate of special recognition. So folks on the board of health, step up. This is for Amy Gabriel, who is. Good to see Amy's daughter went into labor this morning. So she chose to be there instead of coming here. But we have a certificate of special recognition presented to Amy Gabriel in recognition and appreciation for 30 years of service at the state health department, 31 total years of public service. So hopefully they can present that to her. Mary, nice to see you. I have one in front of the screen here. Come on. Two of them. One, two, three. One, two. All right. Now we're on to our agenda. We have Tom Lining back with us. Be able to welcome Tom back a little bit ago. Tom served as well for a few time, and now he's back to present on the State Health and Board of Ohio.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you said, we are, I'm back here on behalf of the board, on behalf of my executive director, who is a current resident of Cary, as well as the board itself. We're appreciative to allow you to have me come down here and speak. The board's very interested in having some community outreach, talking to local government partners and public, kind of letting you know what we do. It's kind of an agency that's a little bit shrouded in mystery with a lot of confidentiality. So we'd like to come out in public and kind of present and go from there. Mission statement of the board is to protect the public and enhance all of the safety through effective medical regulation. The board is a statutorily created entity. It's done that in the revised code, and then through the Ohio administrative code, the board congregates rules that affect the Administration of Medical Practices Act. The board is made up of 12 members. They're appointed by the governor, governor will line up five-year terms. We have nine physicians, seven MDs, one DO, and one DPM, and three super members that are appointed by the governor as well. Board meets the second Wednesday of every month at the Rose Tower. You can attend live open meetings, or you can watch our YouTube channel. If you really have nothing else to do on Wednesday morning. The board was formed in 1896. It was originally established to govern outpatient physicians, as well as women's wives. And it was created by statute, as I said, 4731. Twelve members of the board. We have our board president is Betty Montgomery, former attorney general, county prosecutor. She is the president. Sherry Johnson is our DO member, the vice president. We have Dr. Kim Rothemell and Dr. Bruce Safran. She is the, Dr. Rothemell's the board secretary. Dr. Safran is the pediatric medicine physician, who's the supervising member. The board licenses, investigates, and prosecutes and disciplines licensees. So to do that, under the board's supervision, the secretary and the supervising member are non-voting members of the board. So they always abstain on every vote, but they attend meetings behind the scenes to direct investigations. We have Dr. Emma Soin. Robert Jock alone is one of our community members, as well as Mrs. Montgomery. And Michael Ganna Dot, this is also one of the community members. Dr. Michael Schottenstein, Dr. Jonathan Fidel, Dr. Horace Carrera, Dr. Yeshwant Ready, and Dr. Mark Beckel, who's the leader of the board. Board issues licenses, more than 95,000 licensees in the state of Ohio. Most common that everyone thinks of are the outpatient physicians, the MDs, osteopathic physicians, the DOs, and pediatric physicians. We also inherit licensed training certificates. So these will be the residents that come into the state and various hospitals to train physicians. Less common than people don't realize, we have licensed anesthesiologists assistants, physicians assistants, radiologists assistants, genetic counselors, massage therapists, dieticians, acupuncturists, and respiratory pairs. So kind of across the board of medical things. And there's always threats. It is, boards, other boards get smaller, they're going to make us absorb those. So it could grow from there. So things to look at first is, we deal with complaints from the public. And kind of what is a complaint? And that's basically any allegation against a licensee of any kind of misconduct that's received by the board. And they're always going to be confidential. So we never discuss what the allegation is specifically. We don't give out the complaint. It's a lot like JMS investigations where things are done very confidentially. Board has jurisdiction to look at any complaint, including but not limited to, these are kind of the more heavy hitters, the sexual misconduct, the drug impairment, substandard care, inappropriate prescribing, criminal offenses. And within these categories, it can be from even in more serious categories or more minor offense, all the way up to something that would warrant criminal prosecution. Sexual misconduct, for example, since post-Dr. Strauss to OSU, we've taken that, set that up a lot. So, you know, sexual misconduct can go anywhere from a doctor making an off-color comment where someone is offensive to, we have ones that have been prosecuted for rape. So it runs a whole gamut. We also, you know, complaints can be as simple as, my doctor was rude, unprofessional, lack of bedside manner. We get complaints a lot about insurance and billing and things that we don't have jurisdiction over. But these are kind of the bigger ones. When a medical work gets a complaint, we take investigations. We do investigations in that. We have 25 investigators that are scattered across the state of Ohio that work out of our homes remotely. We share investigative information with law enforcement and other licensing boards, other agencies, only if that agency is pursuing an investigation or prosecution. So we don't spread the information unless there's something warranting for them to do that. Or disciplinary actions, however, become public records, and they are posted on metaohio.gov. And you can look up licensees' profiles on the licenseohio.gov. So once we get that formal action, then it becomes public record. But before that, we're statutorily shielded by confidentiality. Kind of a flow chart of the process. When we receive the complaint, that's still in the dark blues, or still the information's confidential. Whenever we get complaints, and you can file a complaint in a number of ways, and it can be something as simple as an anonymous voicemail on our hotline. And everything is looked at by our complaint department and fumbled through. We use medical terminology for everything. So it goes to the triage. So there are five triagers. The chief of legal, her first assistant, myself, my first assistant, and our quality assurance manager. So one of five attorneys will look at the complaint. We decide if we have jurisdiction and where we need to route it from there. If it's not within the jurisdiction, we do what's called a protocol close. So if we have a protocol that says I can close it, for example, I like to, you know, I shouldn't have to pay this co-pay. We don't deal with billing issues if it's closed. The complaint gets a letter saying we don't have the jurisdiction. If the complaint does not support a disciplinary action, there's just nothing we can do with this. It's not statutory, statutorily in our purview to handle. We can close that as well. If the investigation does support some kind of discipline by the board, we then forward that on. Usually it goes to the enforcement investigation staff, that would be part of my department. And we then form that out for investigation. We have subpoena power. We have the ability. All licensees are compelled by statute to cooperate. So we have a lot that we can get information. Patient records, ORs reports for prescribing things, that kind of stuff. We pass that in the red highlighted box. It's kind of, works sort of like the criminal world, where there is a possibility for a consent agreement, a plea bargain. If that is, then we move on and go into that disciplinary process. And these light blues become public information. If there is no consent agreement, we issue what's called a citation, which is kind of like a criminal charge, bring you in front of a hearing officer. And then we move through that. You have the opportunity to ask for the hearing. If you do, you can come in, present your witnesses. We bring in our experts. The hearing is done by the assistant attorney generals. And they have a mini trial and decide from there. The hearing officer then makes reports and recommendations to the board, which is kind of like, I suggest this is what the sentence should be, the punishment. If there's no hearing required, the hearing officer or the legal department puts together one of two options. It goes to the board for their vote on what should happen. And ultimately, the board will meet, vote, and possibly either impose a discipline that is recommended, or they can modify that as well. Disciplined actions all come out of 473122B. There are 51 of them that we can cite a position on. If it's not in that 51 sections of that statute, we cannot issue a citation on it. We work with law enforcement pretty extensively in the state. We have a duty to always report to law enforcement if we believe there's anything in any kind of criminal activity. So anything with the improper prescrivings, anything with drug impairment, anything with sexual misconduct, it all gets reported to law enforcement. Law enforcement and prosecutors also have a statutory duty to report to the board. Licensee is quite guilty to inflicted a bound, elevated, or intervention of blue if you're in violation of these three chapters, and that is sex offenses, drug offenses, and the 3719 is inappropriate prescribing offenses. Any felony, if the licensee committed a misdemeanor in the course of their practice and/or if the misdemeanor involves moral turpitude. So there are certain ones that require a reporting there. Every licensee has a duty to report in the state of Ohio. So if a physician knows of another physician's actions, or if they themselves have committed a crime or done something, they have the duty to report on themselves. And if they do not report on each other or themselves, that's a whole other violation. So we can cite the physician that didn't make the report to the board. Like I said, you can file a complaint a number of ways. You can do it through the 800 number there, by leaving voicemail. You can do it through the portal. You can email us. You can write a letter. Really, any way you can get it to us, we can look into it. And everything gets looked into by someone. We have, there's a whole website with everything you can look at there, the e-licensing, all of that material. Any questions?
So how often do you find someone in one of those many fields you guys cover that is broken law or needs to be censured or have a license taken? How often does that really happen?
Last month, we issued 14 citations. So that would be 14 charges that we determined. This month is going to be 13. So I looked at numbers this morning. As of this morning, we have gotten 6,396 complaints. That doesn't obviously mean that everyone's been issued something. So, you know, we're looking at probably an average of 10 going out in citations. At the same time, we average about half of that in settlements. So of the 10, you may have 15 total, because five doctors have agreed to, or five licensees have agreed to some type of either lesser punishment, or, you know, they always have the option of permanently surrendering their licensing. I've done that five times in six months, since I've been there, except by permanent surrender.
And so when we, years ago, were talking about closing down pill mills, this is where that happened?
Yes, pill mills were the big thing several years ago, because it was the, investigators were out. Looking at doctors, looking at all the prescribing. That's kind of gone by the wayside. We've sort of gotten past that. I would say the big issue now that we deal with the heavy hitters is the sexual misconduct. And that, you know, everything comes out of a media report. And so that would be the Dr. Strauss story and things like that. But, you know, the board does, you know, the Dr. Usles, the things like that is what we do. So.
I don't have any questions. I guess it's a funny story, Tom. But years ago, I was representing a doctor who had been sued. And he had this marketing thing where he videoed surgeries and then sent the video to the patient afterwards. It was kind of like a thing that Memento or something they could keep or watch or whatever. Yeah, and he had a temp in as the videographer one day. When the surgery was over, the doctor said, done. Well, his normal videographer knew what that meant. This videographer cut the video, but left the audio on. And then the doctor and some of the staff made statements about the anatomy of the patient that shouldn't have been made. And it was on the video. The doctor didn't know something. And sent it to the patient. She's having like a dinner party or something, or whatever, with friends. And says, hey, you want to see my surgery? And then all these comments. She's very unhappy.
Now, in the current social media, we have issues of surgeries being filmed in livestream. So you can watch things as it happens on various platforms. So that's an issue that technology has brought to us.
Legal, whenever the doctor won the lawsuit, nobody could.
Legal, whenever.
So your purpose today is to raise awareness of.
Yeah, raise awareness. I mean, what we want is if people have problems, there's an issue of, you know, if we believe there's physician misconduct, if we, the providers are impaired. We look at a lot of substance abuse issues. Sadly, COVID has really brought that on in the medical community. It's just the stressors the last, I don't know, two or three years. It feels like 30, but I've just brought on a lot of issues like that in the board. And the issues of impairment, you know, the main focus is to remediate that physician. We have the Ohio Physicians Health Program, One Light. So if the program is basically One Light at the apple, if there's a problem, we can get them into some kind of treatment. It is a disciplinary problem, only unless we have relapses and people refuse the help that we provide itself. So, yeah, we just want to get out, law enforcement prosecutor's office. I know prosecutor Widge has ordered me some, since I've been there, that he's had some issues with. So we want to, you need to know that, to let us know. We'd rather hear it upfront, rather than trying to chase it from behind, you know?
Commissioner, that's it. So frivolous complaints, what do you consider, you know, mentioned at time, or mentioned at any exact conclusion?
We call that unprofessional and rude conduct. So, and the physician gets three passes in a year. If I get the fourth complaint that they're being unprofessional and rude, we have the option, I can open up and the board, and I can open a complaint myself. Just I don't need somebody from the public to do it. So I can open that up. And then we have various methods to deal with that. Our secretary and supervising member, we do what's called investigatory office conferences, where we will bring the licensee in, and the secretary and supervising member, and I or one of my staff will sit there, and they, physician gives questions. So sometimes it becomes, you're going to the principal's office, and you're getting what I'm talking to. And you can send out a caution letter warning you that we've got these complaints. So we try to fix that. But those are considered that. We get a lot of complaints, because we do take anonymous complaints. There's a fair amount of people that want, you know, I'm dating someone, and I'm no longer dating someone, and now I'm going to call up and mess with their license and somehow. So we look into them, but usually we can flush those out fairly quickly.
All right, any other questions? You should have been here, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, we now have a transportation improvement district board interview with Kurt Shaw. So we did this certificate of special recognition. Time to talk about our financial part. How you doing, Dave, Mark?
Pretty good. How you doing, Dave? Well, good morning. So for today, I'd first like to thank the commissioners for this opportunity to speak today. And I'm going to be reviewing the year-to-date quarter three general fund revenue and expense results, as well as the 2023 budget results. These results for the year-to-date quarter three results are based upon comparisons for the third quarter, January through September of 2021, and January for September of 2022. The year-to-date third quarter results revenue was lower than previous year by about 359,000. The decrease in revenue is driven by about $2.9 million drop in fees and charges for services. I'll explain in the next few slides. It also contains a slight drop in conveyance fees year-over-year, but just a slight drop. Our year-to-date third quarter sales tax and property taxes continue to make up a large portion of the county general fund revenue. Sales tax equated to about 46%, and property tax equated to about 23% of revenue during the year-to-date third quarter. Continuing, total revenue through the third quarter was about $46.9 million, which is below the third quarter of the previous year by about 0.8%. However, these results are a little deceiving. Sales tax is up about $1.2 million. Joe rental was up $608,000. Investment earnings were up about $418,000. But however, the total year-to-date third quarter revenue was driven down by about 35, by about 36.5% of the fees and charges for services were revenue was received in 2021, was not received in 2022. So kind of a timing thing, year-over-year. That revenue, that impacted this result, were $1.5 million BWC COVID refund and a $1 million ARP recovery funds that were received in 2021, but not in 2022. As we discussed throughout 2022, sales tax has continued to be something strong for our county. This chart represents the overall trajectory of sales tax over time. At 2022, year-to-date quarter three was $21.6 million versus a $20.3 million for 2021. And looking at this total year, because we're kind of seeing, starting to see those results for the entire year, for 2022, the total estimated revenue is currently at $28.9 million versus the $27 million of the previous year in 2021. It's about a $1.9 million increase from '21 to 2022.
$28.9 is the total in a year?
$28.9, yes, sir. The year-to-date third quarter expenses were compared to prior year, were up compared to prior year by about $2.2 million. This increase was driven by $1.3 million increases in personnel services, which is focused around our employee salaries, and about $1 million in transfers. And I'll explain those here in these next slides. Personnel services continues to be our largest expense at 37% during the third quarter. Our contract services came in at 22, and transfers coming in at 20% of total expenses. Making up these variances was personal services, again, which is salaries, salary expenses, and the transfers related to capital projects. 38% of those personal services increases were driven by the sheriff's office, which is our largest department. Transfers made up 20%, or about $1 million of those increases in the third quarter. Transfers were driven by capital improvements, and the energy project that happened in 2021, that did not happen in 2022. This is all I have right now for the third quarter of results. Any questions? All right. Moving on to the 2023 budgets. I first like to thank everyone who I've worked with and learned, learned several things from them throughout this year and the budget season. Working with all of you has allowed us to grow and to understand not only your budget, but also the mission as in respect to your area's responsibility. And I look forward to making improvements to this process in 2023. The 2023 expenses equated to $59.65 million as compared to $61.4 million of 2022. As, as you can see from the general fund estimated revenues for 2023, as $56.6 million for revenue over, maybe back up here. As you look at our general fund expenditures for revenues for 2023, the $56.6 million of revenue and our expenses coming in slightly below that of $56.1 million, based upon a 94% of the appropriations level view. Some notable budget parameters are the 3.5% increase in salaries, as well as no increase in health benefit plan rates this year, thanks to all the hard work in our HR department in the fifth quarter that have kept those rates down year-over-year. And our projected carryover, we're estimating right now around greater than $32 million. So some of the 2023 budget highlights. These highlights here are investments in the maintenance and operations infrastructure needs. $362,000 being investment safety maintenance and remodeling projects. $465,000 being appropriated for IT, for an IT tech, IT server upgrade, and $210,000 is being set aside for security equipment throughout the county that needs upgrading. This county, the county is also providing appropriations for investments in vehicles for efforts to replace our aging fleets. A large one there, the sheriff, the sheriff is out, is purchasing right now. They typically get purchased about six marked vehicles and two unmarked vehicles every year. And they're adding an additional four vehicles this year to cover some of the aging vehicles. And they're adding an additional four vehicles this year to cover some of the aging vehicles that they have within their fleet. The auditor auditor is also looking to replace a weight and measure vehicle and the veterans administrations or department is trying to, uh, work to replace the transportation vehicles that they have as well that are aging out. The county is also investing in community needs by providing support of about $86,000 for an overdose deaths investigator to support the community issues that need addressed. Uh, need addressed and focused through the prosecutor's office. The commissioner is also providing $81,000 of support in conjunction with the engineer's office to address current and future needs of the county. This is in conjunction with the transportation improvement district. We're hiring an engineer to help in that area. And the county is also increasing like fairfield public transportation by $150,000 to support the transportation needs. Some other notable highlights. We're providing appropriations for the purchase of a purchase of a payment key house to help the public pay real estate taxes at the Fairfield Center. And I believe this is for nine long cash options at this time. And we are continuing to provide appropriations towards the state and federal grants throughout the county. Our vessels continue on with our ARP funds. Through ARP, the county has provided investments of 6.5 million dollars for the Fairfield Center for purchase and renovation. Uh, by utilizing revenue lost dollars. We're investing $200,000 for the smart growth plan as we look to address growth throughout the county. For providing support of $501,000 to the community support, a community, community school attendance program focused on truancy. And $44,000 to the school drivers, education vehicles, and all those items are being covered through the revenue loss section of ARP. And lastly, $160,000 for business consulting focused on retention and recruitment throughout the community. All these projects are end of supporting our community. Other notable ARP projects, we're doing $3 million in infrastructure projects, water and sewer. That includes projects in Baltimore where we're doing a water project for 613,000 plus a bill, a water project for 659,000. Walnut Creek, a sewer project for 750,000 and Greenvale, where we're going with this station, we're helping with the station only. We also have housing projects with a total of 3.6 million dollars. I include projects that I manage and habitat management. And we're also investing in technology upgrades, playing 4.4 million dollars. Where we're including that we're doing investments in public safety, peace management, operations, uh, to meet needs identified from the pandemic. These projects include county offerings, upgrades, um, county case management systems, public safety, engineering software upgrades, just to name a few. General fund by the numbers, the total general fund expense budget for 2022, the current is 61 million dollars. And the total general fund budget for 2023 is coming in at 59.6 million. Our total number of employees currently is 955, with 357 of them being in the general fund. Our notable budget parameters were at 3.5% and again, as we already identified, no increase in rates in 2023 for health insurance. Some additional numbers are $2 million additional appropriations for salaries. 1.5 million or 72% of this is in relation to the sheriff's office, which again is our largest department. $18,000 increase was based upon accordance with the ORC for our elected officials. And over 58% of the general fund is dedicated to public safety operations. 30.8% of those increases relate to the sheriff's office. While the corner prosecutor courts juvenile detention and CPS make up the rest. Some of the general fund reductions are include $287,000 from telecom budget. This is more of a timing issue where we process things here in 2022 that will not be, uh, purchased in 2023. $273,000 in board of elections, uh, which was a reductions and, uh, things that they do not need for 2023. Um, and this also could be legislation that may help us in the future as we deal with the cyclical up and down associated with the board of elections. As they have to address, um, needs for their equipment as time goes on. We have $57,000 reduction in debt transfers, and this is the result of, um, that's coming on and that's going away. Um, and the result of that is a 57, um, 57,000 dollar reduction overall. We have a $73,000 reduction in training cost. This is based upon removing computer technology courses that we no longer need. And an anticipation reduction or a day of leadership training for next year. And lastly, uh, 1.9 million dollar reduction in capital projects, which we have moved some capital projects up in 2022. And they will not need all those funds for 2020. Our general fund revenue highlights, sales tax is projected to be down about 11% year over year. And that's just our projection at this time. Um, some of the other notable projections are the increase in general property taxes of 9%. The, um, interest income, which has increased by 1.3 million dollars year over year and jail rental income that's up 1.1 million dollars. Um, and then also to say again, the carryover cash right now, we're estimating at a plus 32, 32 million at this time. And finally, the all funds budget is 218 million versus 211 million. From 2022 and includes grants, special revenue funds, debt service, capital improvements and utilities in there as well. So that's all I have for right now. Any questions?
So Bart, um, your first budget round and, uh, just want to commend you and your team, Stacy, wherever she may be. Uh, and others, uh, and all the department heads and, you know, the elected officials, but you guys did great work. Uh, presented some strong budget and really wanted to express our appreciation to you for.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
No, I joined because it makes us, uh, compliments of you and everybody involved in the budgeting process. I think each of us commissioners could probably find individual line items that aren't necessarily our favorite line item. But collectively, it's a good budget. And ultimately the metric for physical health. It's kind of solid right now. So it's a, it's a neat moment, Tom. We're in good shape. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
So again, I compliment you apart and others who were involved in the process and went, uh, very, very well. But I think what's really important here is, uh, future budgets. And even the term we're working under shows we're moving forward with, uh, innovative ideas, especially in technology and, um, workforce, transportation and other areas. But I, I think it's all good. It's, uh, it's not a stagnant budget, but moving forward with the things that the county desperately needs. Thank you.
Who else?
Thank you, Bart, Casey, and everybody that participated in the process.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going back to number four. Kurt Schalk is with us. Kurt, if you could. I'm on up. I guess today podium, uh, we're all to see the crowd. Welcome.
Good morning.
Appreciate you coming here today. We're, uh, interviewing you for a spot on our transportation improvement district board. Um, so maybe I, I have not met you before. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about yourself in your background.
Well, I'm, um, I've got my 25 years of professional engineering experience. The first 15 of that was in Licking County as a consultant for two different firms, did a lot of work with. Now started off a lot of private development and then kind of transitioned into municipal work for Zanesville, Cambridge and Lancaster. Went to Lockwood, Lanier, Mathias, Nolan. I was there for four years where I met Mitch Nolan, my predecessor. Jeremiah and some other folks. I've been with the city as the assistant city engineer for six years. I was recently appointed the city engineer by the mayor. Which is great. Mitch Nolan has left us to go to the county, as probably all know. So he was on the, uh, transportation improvement district. Some of those meetings I've been to to kind of sit in for Mitch, so I'm aware of what it's all about. Um, so I guess I'm here to ask that, uh, I be appointed to that committee to represent the city of Lancaster. And, and its interest in working with Fairfield County and, you know, all the townships and the county engineer to try to, uh, you know. Economic development jobs, you know, we want to go after these monies to create, uh, jobs. So.
All right. Mr. Davis.
I don't have any questions, but just on behalf of the commissioner's office, we thank you for your interest in this. And, uh, I, I think we met in passing at a council meeting one time, just shook hands or something, but I look forward to working with you. Appreciate your willingness.
Thank you.
So, uh, yeah, so obviously with the, the kid. Uh, appointment, you'll again be working with Mitch and, uh, in, in, uh, the. This Ted has become more and more important here in the last few years, especially with the onset of, uh, major things coming in the future. I think we all know what those are. So how would you view the kid being helpful? I think a lot of that happened. What would be your vision of that?
Well, I think probably the biggest thing is the partnership. You're getting all these governmental agencies in the same room, working together, you know, they promote, um, private money going into these projects as well. I think that scores a lot of points with the state to see that kind of cooperation. Instead of, you know, competing against the county, we're all in the same room. And we're kind of working through things in the best interest of things outside of the county aren't. You know, we're not isolated. It affects Lancaster and things we do in Lancaster affects the county. A lot of the projects that, you know, we've been talking about or they've been talking about in the Ted because of, you know, with, with Mitch, I was, you know, I, I. We spoke every day, so there's not much that he wasn't talking about, but I don't know, at least something about. So. A lot of those projects are, you know, you have to have a regional buy-in and you have to have, you know, everybody participating. So that's. Kind of what, um, the best benefit that I can see, but.
Jeremiah?
Um, I don't have any questions for you, Kurt. You and I know each other pretty well. Uh, welcome aboard. I appreciate your willingness to step in there after Mitch has stepped down. We've got a great thing going. I think it's only going to get better. Thank you. And thanks to the commissioners also for all of your help in making all this come together.
Kurt, do you have any questions for us?
Well, I have a lot of questions, but maybe not the place right now. Just the logistics of it, you know, you know.
That's Jeremiah.
Figure it out. Yeah, Jeremiah.
If you're not there, we delegate everything to you. Remember that.
I just don't want to be made an officer, so I gotta go to every meeting so that that doesn't happen.
We, uh, we appreciate the willingness to serve. This is a very important board for us. Um, yeah, there's, uh, it's been building and we know that we've got some big projects already on, on the table and, uh, bigger projects yet to come. The more, as you said, that we're all in it together, the better our chances are of securing the funding to make these projects come to fruition. So we appreciate you, Mr. President. Thanks for being here today. All right.
This would be, um, to fulfill the unexpired term that began immediately, um, upon, um, commissioner's vote. Uh, and then expiring May 31st, 2026.
Okay. All right. Um, we are now at the session for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission this morning?
Good morning and, uh, I'm glad to be here today and I'd like to see all the people that are in this room. We're looking at, uh, people that have a lot to say about what affects each and everybody in this county. And it goes on, I turned to, uh, um, Kurt just a moment ago and I said, you know, when I came into this county, they were talking in thousands. Now they're talking in millions. There's a lot of difference that has happened in the last 50 years that I've been in this county. But the responsibilities that everybody in this room has has grown sometimes more than what you would like to see. And more decisions that you have to make that. You wish you didn't have to make and because right now what's coming down from the state, every place that I've been in the last, uh, month. The figures, the financial figures coming into the county and local schools and everything else. It's kind of fluctuating up and down. It depends upon this and this and this. So a lot of decisions. Have to cooperate together. And, uh, I look at the background in our nation. And our founding fathers wanted federal government to be small. And let the people dictate more of what goes on. And it's almost impossible to do that today. So with that thought in mind, I would like to pray for people in this room. That are in positions to make decisions that, uh, will affect everybody. So. In, as we turn to the father. For guidance and directions in what we do each and every day, help us to look around us. And especially. Look to the Bible and our Father in heaven, because he understands more than what we do. He does have a hand on each and every one of you in this room. That's my belief and I know from my own personal experience. That the Lord is directing each and everything that happens. As much as we like to think that we have the power, we need to confer with somebody that knows it all. And I pray that we will turn to the Lord to do this. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. My wife will be following me up here. And I know I have something to pass out to the commissioners. She's trying to separate it out now.
A little confusion.
I don't know whether she's going to talk about all this or not.
I don't know either. Good morning. Um, you know, there's each, you know, I do speak about, uh, uh, health issues, being from the health issue or health department myself. And, um, I am very concerned about, uh, what's going on and continues to go on. And, um, the. Top headline on the commissioner's, um, page here, the CDC doing. top headline on the Commissioner's page here, the CDC knew COVID vax causes heart problems, but kept mum. The agency still is fighting to keep a secret. And it goes on explaining the extraordinary high rate of complications suffered. One in three, CDC showed one in three reported needing medical care, missing schoolwork, or the inability to perform normal daily activities. Just the news reported this. And, and yet, they, they kind of kept things silent, didn't they? And now, on the second page, the HHS secretary urges COVID booster every two months. The FDA resorts to scolding as vast majority of Americans reject the shots. And let's face it, our constitution does not indicate that we should be having a shot. It does not make it mandatory. That's man, and they're not following the constitution then. Also, follow you, what happened with him? What he has done to many persons, illness and the deaths that he's caused. And look at the medical doctors and many staff of the hospitals, how they stripped famous doctors of their license to practice. And look at the money the doctors who were too fearful, look at many doctors who were too fearful of telling the truth because their jobs were threatened. And now consider our military, how we have lost so many good and faithful, loyal ones. And the, well, the how it wrecked their, and health as well as their, their lives, their marriages.
Thirty seconds, Judy.
And then consider the kids and their lives, interrupted their, their health as well as parents' jobs. And one thing about education, the constitution not being taught anymore. No one is pushing the shot, is willing to debate. No one pushing the shot is willing to debate in public with those of us who do not believe this is a good thing. We know this is not right. It's not healthy. Even President Trump just made a statement that we are going from a republic to a democracy and slipping right into communism. I hope most people have read. I hope you have the rise and the fall of the third.
Anyone else that would like to address the Commission this morning?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Steve Feeney. My address is 1970 West Glenhurst Drive in Lancaster. I hope to offer in these three minutes some solace for those who have suffered under the COVID tyranny that has infected the world for more than two years now. Those who have lost their jobs, been fired for not taking the clot shot. For so many of us who have been shocked at the overreach of the administrative state, lockdowns, the mandates, the distancing, and all for respiratory virus that is no worse than the seasonal flu. For those of us who realize the uselessness of social distancing, who understood the minute fraction of the population that could die from the virus, who didn't go along with the narrative, who were glared at for not wearing a mask, we were right. Thank God for those doctors who stood up to the tyranny, Dr. Peter McCullough, Dr. David Martin, Dr. Robert Malone, Dr. Naomi Wolf, to name only a few of all of them canceled by the big tech titans, monstrous companies with monstrous reach, working in conjunction with the administrative state. All the unelected bureaucrats and the thousands of talking heads on the legacy news media doing the bidding of the new moral order. Who are these people? And now the truth is slowly being exposed, that the clot shot does not stop transmission, the increase in deaths by those who have received the clot shot, so many dying suddenly. Recently, Professor Emily Oster penned a tome in The Atlantic titled, "Let's Declare Pandemic Amnesty." We knew it had to come. All the know-it-alls, you and your ilk, Ms. Oster, who at one time had few kind things to say to those of us who didn't share the narrative. No one has said to me, "Steve, please forgive me. Steve, I was wrong about the clot shot. I was wrong about mask effectiveness. I was wrong about asymptomatic transmission." No, I'm sorry. No, forgive me, I was wrong. When it comes to the administrative state, their maniacal COVID overreach, it brings to mind the great Russian novelist Dostoevsky, who said, "They know they are lying to us. We know they are lying to us. They know that we know they're lying to us, yet still they lie to us." This morning, in the Liturgy of the Hours, the first song read is Psalm 43. It begins, "Defend me, oh God, against, and plead my cause against a godless nation. From deceitful and cunning men, rescue me, oh God. Please, no more lies, no more deceit, no more lockdowns, no more masks, no more distancing, all of it. Forgiveness, yes. Amnesty, no. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission this morning? Here we go. It's time for legal update. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Fix. We have nothing specific to beat the Commission on today.
Question on legal?
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's legal or Dennis, but what's the current hang-up on, the one-stop on the solar array?
South Central Power easements released that are in the way of the layout, solar array. It's just such an incredibly slow process.
Is there something we could do? Could we invite South Central Power here to explain why it would take so long?
Good, I suppose, but I'm not sure. I mean, it's been a back and forth. I mean, I'm not sure that it's totally their fault. I think it's the contractor too, you know. It's been so slow to discover what the problems were, so to speak, so that is what's holding it up, so.
Maybe both of them come in, the contractor and, and South Central Power and see if we might move that towards a conclusion. And I'm not being harsh on, on anybody. It's just, and I understand project timelines shift occasionally. This one has shifted more than the usual suspects.
Is that something we want to do here, or is that something we want to do?
I, I don't care, as long as it gets done and I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, we're not, the agreement's in place. I think Dennis is just working the backend. So there's nothing we have right now, just, just that we all understand that, so. I think this is just.
Just keep discovering new things, like latest was a supply, a metered supply that South Central Power has an easement on that beats that little pump house. You pull in the driveway out there, which has an easement.
If you could arrange a meeting between South Central Power, contractor, and Commissioner Davis yourself?
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if you get into those conversations and discern that, you know, there's a breakthrough nearing and pressure from our offices unnecessary or something, that's okay too. It's just, you know, I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, but at some point along this horizon, I'm gonna flip out.
I understand.
Not too bad. All right. Anything else I need?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, ARP update from the 30.6 received. 19.6 has been appropriated, 9.9 expanded, and 5.1 encumbered or obligated. We do welcome folks today from the Job and Family Services Leadership Development Program. Thank you all for coming. As part of their experiential phase of the leadership development program, they do come to a commission meeting. So it's a much larger group than the three we have here today, but with us changing up the passage of the budget, the remainder will be here next week. That's when they have that on their schedule. So thanks all for coming. Heather, do you want to add anything to leadership development?
I'm just thanks to Matt, Sarah, and Jessica. We're kind of appreciative.
Welcome.
We got word, the bipartisan infrastructure law bill, the BIL, for fiscal year 23 airport infrastructure grant allocations was released. They're making over 2.89 billion available to over 3,000 airports around the nation. The money can be invested in runways, taxiways, safety, sustainability, terminal, airport transit connection, and roadway projects. FAA is encouraging applicants to prioritize projects that increase airport safety, equity, and sustainability. John Ko just shares that the airport is using the fiscal year 22 BIL funds for a master drainage study, which will help to eliminate the FEMA floodplain on the north side and allow better development of the north commercial zone of the airport, and looking to utilize the 23 funds to go towards the construction of a north apron. The 23 funds are limited for what they can be used for, and unfortunately, hangar construction is not permitted. John, you want to add anything to that?
We're excited. This will go a long way to speeding up that north development. Looking for a big investment with FAA funds.
Thank you very much. Holiday open house next Tuesday, December the 13th, from 11 to 1. All county employees are invited to attend the holiday open house, which we'll have here in the hearing room as well as in the hallway outside. We do ask employees to RCP, just so that we can plan accordingly. The sheriff shared some of his hiring data with me recently. And in '22, so far, the office conducted 96 background investigations for employee recruitment. This resulted in 17 hires. So obviously, a very labor-intensive process, the Detective Bureau, those are the folks that are conducting those background investigations. But given this very difficult time to recruit any type of employee, it is significant that there still was a positive outcome of 17 there. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. We have 28 resolutions for the voting meeting today. We, the resolution to approve the 23 annual appropriation measure, known as the county budget, is on. There are three resolutions for retiring individuals at the sheriff's office to purchase their guns. We also have a resolution authorizing the disposal of Fairfield County surplus property by internet auction for county year 23. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated for the self-insurance fund. This will allow for timely payment in the month of December. A resolution approving the appointment of Ms. Jessica Roth to the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract buy-in between Fairfield County Probate Court Guardianship Services Board with FMC as well as DD. And a resolution to implement a four-way stop at Lythopolis Road and Pickerington Road. Jeremiah, you want to add anything to that one?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, but recently, there was another fatal accident near that intersection. It was not an intersection accident. The young man that lost his life was on a motorcycle at 11th Center. Well, what we have realized is, even though a lot of accidents aren't happening because of the intersection, we do see a consistent pattern in accidents happening because of the curve that leads into the intersection. So I look back at the history, and there's been a steady line of complaints as far back as I looked. Twenty, 25 years, there's been complaints on this intersection. There's been a lot of mitigations done, a lot of different signing and things that have reduced the numbers, but we're still seeing things once in a while. And when we came to the realization that there's a lot of runoff-road accidents that we're not getting a report on, we did our own investigation on that. That's really the reason that I decided to move forward and make it a multiway stop. I think it's going to significantly help the curve. The only caveat to that is, you know, for a little while, we could see an uptick in rear-end incidences. Most of the time, the data shows these aren't serious as compared to an intersection or runoff-road accident, so. That's what we're doing, and that's with a little bit of liability just there, so, thank you.
And thank you to you and Jeremiah and your team. I know you've invested time and effort, energy, in researching this and gathering that data to make that decision. A couple more here. Resolution authorizing the approval of a lease amendment with Colin Aid for the Fairfield Department of Health. Joe, Dennis, do you want to add anything to that one?
I think we had a very successful negotiation, and the terms of the lease and everything are very good. And as a matter of fact, they're not even, they're giving us the first three months for free, and then the rate of the lease is the same as the other lease. Joe has needs. He can talk about the needs.
Yes, thank you, Fisher, for approving that expansion for space for us. We kind of hit our max capacity out there. We never want to be prevented from going after grants or expanding services just because we don't have a place to send a new employee. So this will give us some, some room to kind of stretch out and hopefully get by five-plus years for space.
And then lastly, a resolution to approve the purchase of server cluster infrastructure. Dan, anything to add to that one?
Bart had it in one of the slides for the budget, but there's just several components to this kind of large project, so. We had budget for some of it in 2022, so this is what you said.
Okay, thank you. We already had our budget review. Moving on to recognition, county auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation from magistrate Josh Horacek for the helpfulness and assistance of the auditor's office during his transition to the common police court. County auditor Dr. Brown congratulated the members of the county auditor staff. 100% of the staff has completed the NACO High Performance Leadership Professional Development Academy. Corey Clark shared appreciation for the onsite EAP counselor we have. Unfortunately, our CPS staff experienced a very traumatic case that took an emotional toll on all of them. One of the supervisors called the counselor, was able to get her over to the staff that same day and help them work through that experience. So thank you, Jeff, and the HR team for making that possible, to have that access to a counselor so quickly. Also, thanks to Christina Foster and Emily Gussler for decorating the hearing room here a little bit, a little winter wonderland. Also, another thank you to the Commissioner's admin team, auditor, recorder, and treasurer. We're coming together to provide some holiday meals for families here in the community, and everyone has been very, very helpful with that, so thank you. Also want to thank the county employees who volunteered to ring the bell for the Salvation Army's Red Kettle Campaign. We'll be out at Hobby Lobby this Saturday from 10 to 4, so if you want to come drop some change or even some, some, some dollar bills, then the Red Kettle will be there. I did not realize we were outside. It is outside, so if anybody wants to bring hot chocolate too, that'd be welcome. And lastly, I have money. I want money, and I want good beverages that'll keep me warm. Lastly, again, another thank you to Bart and Stacy for their work on preparing the budget for today's meeting, which was one week earlier than anticipated, so I appreciate their efforts there. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
All right, for calendar review, we have Commissioners Fix and Levacy attending the regional planning commission meeting today at 5:30. Commissioner Levacy will be at the Fairfield 33 Alliance Annual Meeting and Economic Update tomorrow at 8 o'clock. That is at the Workforce Center. And Commissioner Fix is at a three-day conference on the 7th, 8th, and 9th for the CTAO/CEAO Winter Conference. For invitations received, the holiday gathering for December 13th, which Administrator Portal just mentioned, is here next week from 11 to 1. We have the Lancaster Fairfield Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors' final meeting of 2022 on December 13th at the Record Center and the Fairfield County Economic Update on December 16th at 8:30 at the Workforce Center.
Rochelle, will you put me down for the last one, please?
Absolutely, thank you. Correspondents received from TerraCon on behalf of South Central Power, an invitation comment on proposal 138 12 KP Royalton Substation in Amanda. Fairfield County Auditor's Letter to Commissioners and Staff dated December 1st, subject internal control, board of revision, revenue estimates, and November newsletter. Hosei, Center of Science and Industry Congratulatory Letter to Commissioner Fix for recent reelection. The Retreat Technologies Notice of Class 1 Modification to RC/RC Permit Renewal Application. Freedom's Never Free Thank You Letter to Commissioner Levacy for support of their recent event. Fairfield County Auditor's December 2022 Newsletter, titled Auditor's Ledger News from the County Auditor's Office. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. I have not heard back from the sheriff yet on today's GL count, so I will let you know as soon as I get that information in from him. That's all I have.
Hey, well, business, Commissioner Davis.
Couple things if I might. I expect we're nearing a conclusion on the Indigent Defense Resolution.
Yes.
Open to have that next week.
That's correct.
Right? And we're advised informally that there shouldn't be any vitriol or opposition from the defense bar regarding that. That's our early read on that situation. Anya and I had a good meeting with Chuck Dyer from the Ohio Department of Transportation this past week. this past week. We made some suggestions that we're following up on and we'll see where those communications lead and then continue to research and understand where we are at local transit, whether that's maybe where we should be. Last thing I just want to mention, I and I have talked a little bit about this. I think in this coming year, on the commissioner connection videos, I think we continue doing those. I just think that we continue to consider ways to improve the distribution on those videos. I tried a little test last night on an idea. The most recent connection video, which is, I think, six days old now, was sitting at 390 on viewership, which is above the median, above the average. And then I reposted it last night with a tagline about the content. And that resulted in an additional, I think, 70 or so views in the overnight. And it did cause me to wonder if it had been initially released with a content tagline, if that might have increased that initial round of viewership. So, you know, I think the, the things we're doing on format are, are still to be tested more. The, the big format change couple that came out, I think they got released on a holiday Friday. And I, I just, I just don't think we have a good data set yet on whether those worked or not. But just in the spirit of it's, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. We keep, keep working on trying to make those more effective. You know, the outtakes are the most popular thing where, you know, when, when you mess up like you do, people enjoy watching that.
Anything else, Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levacy, your old business?
I'm surprised Commissioner Davis didn't mention that until we attended Charity Newsies last Thursday. We had a great time. You know, what a great organization. A lot of dedicated people that provided a lot of needs for the residents of Fairfield County. So if you're not involved or you haven't given to Charity Newsies, I encourage you to do so. Again, it's a, it's a great time. It's all for the benefit of those who have needs. It's much, much needed.
All right. As past Friday, I had the chance with some of our staff to attend the Economic Development 411 at Ohio State. Room full of people from central Ohio, economic development people, government people, business people, education people. Really well done. Rick and the team from Mode that put that on, drew a really nice job of bringing in some very insightful speakers. The breakout sessions were really informative. So I just want to express my appreciation, Rick and, and all the folks from Mode for putting that together. It's a big event every year. And once again, this year, 600, 400, 500, I don't know, 600 people in the room. So well done to that group. New business. Is it well, first, is there any other old business? Yes.
Last week, we reported on the 14% increase of hotel, hotel lodging tax. And I just wanted to add to that conversation that James and I had a conversation a little bit earlier and he's going to get a letter that's coming out from Walnut Township to those that have Airbnb, asking them to cease and desist from their Airbnb type activities. And so they're really just two different questions. We know that zoning is responsibility of townships, but we in the auditor's office see revenue that is being collected. For that purpose, we will, you know, enforce the resolution that's in place for hotel, motel lodging. So it may seem like it's contradictory in some aspects and that you receive a letter saying, hey, you're collecting revenues for hotel, motel lodging and it's your responsibility to pay this particular tax. But you may also, within the same timeframe, get a letter from Walnut Township trustees that will say cease and desist. So there really are two different questions, but since I'm aware of it, I had not seen the letter, but James is going to get a copy for me. And just wanted to report that because it's a related topic. And also in six days into collecting for dog licenses, we have received about 100 pictures of dogs, some of whom have passed. So if you see the angel wings on the virtual dogs, so those are the dogs that have passed, it seems to have hit a bit of a chord and that people are very appreciative of that particular opportunity, either posting them physically or virtually. We'll do both. So if anybody has a picture of their dog they'd like to have on the website, we'll do that. And all you have to do is email them.
Can I mention something on that? Just, I almost sent you a picture of this because I, I, every year I'm confused by it. I, I get through it. But when your statement comes for your dog licenses, you go down to that bottom section, you know, which says, you know, the kind of dog you have and the color of your dog. And then over in the right, it has the fees. The amounts that you owed, you owe are called fees paid. And, and every time, every year, when I look at that, I think, well, it says paid. So I must have, I must have already paid. But I didn't. So then I pay. But I go through that every year and I just, I don't know if I'm just not reading it correctly and if it would be more clear if it were interpreted for me. But I know every year when I see that, it, it looks like it's telling me I'm already paid when I know that I actually need to pay.
I'm guessing that's just a historical aspect that they just use the pay in. But there's this reason why the word paid can't go off there. So I'll take a look at it.
If you wouldn't mind, just, and like I say, maybe it's all done perfectly and I'm just got brain locked on how to read it in the best way.
Paid at this moment.
The other thing I thought was new, and I'm not sure if it was new or not, you might have just said this, but the option of going online and paying online was really appreciated. I did it. It worked out great. And I thought that was cool.
It's interesting that you should mention that because it actually is not a new option, but it's been kind of highlighted and pulled out so people can notice that a bit more. So that may have.
Yeah, I hadn't noticed.
Worked for that. And I understand that it's worked for a few others. But I'll take a look at the other verbiage that you're mentioning. Let's read it out.
Any other old business? New business?
No.
Just want to point out for the minutes that the board of revision changes relating to the school districts, there will be a summary that all the board of revision participants will receive. Just pay attention to that because it's markedly different for school districts and the limitations that are imposed upon them going forward. And so just wanted to highlight that a little bit so that we are providing a synopsis about that particular change. And the new internal control manual is effective January 1st, 2023. And the major change is the capitalization threshold. The other aspects are more formatting, organization, and not as major changes. Everything that's been presented to us as a suggestion was taken. And there was one thing that was added based upon experiences in another county relating to indoor establishments.
Any other new business?
I did get the G L count updated from the sheriff. Last week it was 275 with 33 being contracted. Today reports 267. So a little drop in overall population with 32 of those being contracted placements. So not much change on the contracts.
And we'll get to our voting pattern.
I would please rise if you're able to join us in the quest of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which stands one nation, under, indivisible, free and justice for all.
Are there any announcements?
Yes, from the review session, there is a clarification on the Fairfield 33 Alliance Annual Meeting that Commissioner Levacy will be attending. It is at 8:30 tomorrow at Blue Label Digital. That is it.
Okay. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the November 29th meeting? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0 from the commissioners, resolution 2022-12-six-a, a resolution approving the appointment of Ms. Jessica Roth to the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Move commissioners, resolutions A, B, C, D, E, F.
Second. Any discussion?
Just on this appointment to developmental disabilities, I don't know what you guys were thinking when you didn't overrule me the first time you were on this, but I'm glad you found me out.
We won't make that mistake again. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. If it pleases the board, I can, under the commissioners, present from the floor, resolution 2022-12-six-a, a resolution approving the appointment of Mr. Curtis Shaw to the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District Board.
I'm a second.
Any discussion?
Just, Mr. President, reiterate the appreciation we expressed to Mr. Shaw earlier regarding his willingness to serve. And we thank him for that.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The Fairfield County Board of Elections, resolution 2022-12-six-g, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and major expenditure object categories for fund number 2775.
I'll be, move Board of Elections, resolution C, D, E. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. From Fairfield County Clerk of Courts, resolution 2022-12-six-a, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, resolution 2022-12-six-j, a resolution authorizing an account-to-account transfer for E M A Fund 2707, subfund 8310.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Engineer, resolution 2022-12-six-k, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and major expenditure object category, county engineer 2024 motor vehicles for employee payouts.
Move engineers' resolutions K, L, M, N, in.
Second. Discussion? Go ahead.
Briefly, again, the four-way stop is on there.
Yeah, we're going to get to that in just a second.
That's going to be a good, a good thing for, we're going to come back to that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Any further discussion on K through N? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. For Fairfield County Engineer, resolution 2022-12-six-o, a resolution to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Lythopolis Road, County Road 39 and Pickerington Road, County Road 20.
So, if I might, Mr. President, before there's a motion on that, I just want to check just for a minute, from my own understanding, I'm sure we've got resolutions just like this before. I'm just not recalling them. But is it, so it's the commissioners by this resolution who are deciding to put this stop in? Or are you making that decision? How's that, what's going on here?
I'm making the decision, but the commission, the board commissioners own the roadway, own the stop sign, so on and so forth. So my understanding is, is that, so that's why we go through the resolution process. If you guys agree or disagree, things like that.
And that's correct.
Then the question that I have on the, the, before this resolution arrives that, and then nothing, this is negative, Jeremiah. This is like.
No, I understand.
You know, what, what you want to do. The, before this resolution got to us, your office apparently did some analysis of the intersection, right?
Correct.
And then before this resolution got to us, was the, in what ways, if any, was the public involved in the process prior to this resolution getting to us?
There was a considerable amount of, of public reaching out to us, wondering if anything could be done to the intersection to eliminate this. There were people that, that set a lot of data in, made some concerning remarks. We looked into a lot of that data, found out it was false. So there was some of that going on, but during that process, we always maintain if there was something we could do to help, we would do that. We've worked through those issues with the public. We've kept them informed. They already know that we're putting up the stop signs or we've agreed to, so on and so forth.
Then the, on the timing issues, if this resolution passes today, when would this stop go up?
By the end of the week. And, I mean, let me correct that. We will go through a period of signage that says traffic pattern change coming. And then that will step into the change and it will have additional signing for a period of time. So people can, to help people recognize there's a change. And then eventually, after a certain period of time, it just goes to a four-way stop and we don't have that additional signing to help make people aware that there's a change.
Please. So another question I have is, you know, just thinking about it, not being nearly as familiar with these things as you are, it, it seems there would be a couple of different audiences here. It would be interested in that intersection. There would be folks perhaps who reside in that immediate area and have, you know, a, a vantage point on that intersection, living in the immediate area. And then I imagine there are other, perhaps even a larger number of folks who sometimes use that road as an alternative to commute north. I have no idea what traffic numbers look like on that road, but I just imagine that, you know, at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning, there's probably a fair amount of them on in terms of northbound traffic. Again, would imagine in the three to six range in the evening, there's some traffic coming south on that road. And I, I guess I'm referring to those people as like a different audience. I understand. If I want to go back into the, the, the community outreach and engagement, so to speak, on this issue, did, were you primarily talking to people who reside in that area? Or do you even know where they're coming from?
I mean, I can say that I, I believe that most of the people we corresponded with, if not all of them, were in that area. And I didn't pay particular attention to them. But that seemed to be the trend in the, you know, complaints, calls, concerns we were getting.
Let me ask you this from a practical standpoint. If the commission did not vote on this resolution today, but agreed that we would vote on this resolution next week, what complications, if any, would that present for you? And the reason I ask that is, I'm reminded a little bit, Mr., that, like, a long time ago, when I was on city council, we would have first reading, we would have second reading, we would have third reading. And sometimes we would suspend the rules and do something on first reading. But from the public standpoint, there were multiple opportunities to be aware of what we were about to do in that first reading, that second reading, before we got to third reading. And then I come to the commission and, you know, we just, we pop. And then I come to the Commission, and, you know, we just, we pops out a moment, we do it, you know? And it just seems like a moment for, where I don't think it would necessarily hurt anything to just kind of have this public discussion about this issue. People can then become aware of it or not, however that happens, whatever, and then we maybe take action on it next week. Feels better to me than what may come as a surprise to some people, I guess. And again, I'm talking about the two audiences. One audience may be like, I don't know what the heck they're waiting on, by the way, not a way to do that. And another audience that we just talked about might be like, well, I didn't know that was happening, you know? So I, I just want to get your feedback on that idea.
Provide some?
Sure.
I have no idea how people who are commuting on that road that don't live right there would know or, or that we would have an opportunity to have a conversation with them about how they feel about having a stop sign. And I can't imagine how word would get out from this meeting to those commuters who travel on that road, who might not appreciate that there will be, now be a stop, four-way stop there. And if our county engineer says, for safety reasons, we should have a four-way stop sign there, I'm not sure why we would delay that. That's my feedback.
Jeremiah?
I think both of you have very valid points. Commissioner Fix, you have a really good point on how do we reach out to those people if we intend to do so. So I, I guess I'm open for suggestions here, I mean.
Yeah, we just, anyway, anticipating the commuters all listening in here and knowing, okay, what we're doing here, but we're talking about Martin Rancher conduct. And the fact that this was discussed at a meeting in, a scheduled meeting in a public forum before the action was specifically taken. I, I think there's going to be some number, potentially on mathematically, a very small number, but I think there are going to be some number of people who use that road, who are not from that area, who are going to be surprised
Yep.
to find out that, now they need to stop there.
Yep.
And that's okay, I'm not, I'm not down on that, but in terms of our record of conduct, there was a meeting where it was discussed and debated a little bit and talked about, and then another meeting where, you know, it actually happened. There's some measure of process associated with the change. And I, and I understand the process that, that you've gone through at this point. But on this situation, in this moment, I feel like we can use a little process. I'm not talking about a public hearing, you're making a big shindig out of it. Talking about people who want to pay attention to what we're doing, have any interest in what we're doing, you know?
You're giving people the opportunity, if they, if they want to look to, to see and comment. I understand that. The, the curve is the problem, it's not necessarily the intersection. The curve is very well signed, the intersection's very well signed. From a, from a technical standpoint, there's no deficiencies there that I'm concerned about. Leaving for another week, why this thing, it's time to go through the public if it gets out there and, and people react. So what I just said is, you know, basically, regardless of the severity of the most recent accident, there's not a tremendous amount of those accidents happening because of the intersection itself. When they do happen, it's typically because of the curve. It's few and far between, but they're bad when they happen.
In the very next crossroad north, I, I understand there's some debate about north and south, and east and west. For me, it's pretty clear that you travel north and south on that Ithopolis Road, but I understand people say that. As you're going north from that intersection that we're talking about, the very next intersection or crossroad, I think, is Amanda Northern. And I think there's a stop sign already there.
Yes, there is.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's right in the middle of Ithopolis, there is a stop sign.
Right, so I guess I'm just mentioning that to say, you know, the experience of the, the consumer of that road, of the user, north or south, there, there's already a stop sign in the area, so to speak. It's not like they had a rerun all the way to six seventy-four, and now they don't. I mean, not only do you have to stop sign there in the northern, but you also have lights then in the village before you would then get on up to six seventy-four.
Right. Um, this is a good discussion, Commissioner, because as this county continues to grow, especially at the rate that we anticipate, there's going to be more and more of this happen as the amount of drivers, commuters, whatever you want to call them, rise in this county. And those average daily traffic numbers go up, we're going to see this periodically in some of these more busy areas.
So, Mr. President, I'll defer my colleagues here, it's not something I want to, you know, make a big argument out of or whatever. If I were left to my own devices and just being alone, I have this discussion as a foundational basis for a vote next week on, on this change, but if my colleagues, you know, think I'm just, you know, high or something, then just go ahead and do it.
Commissioner, I, I don't have an issue with that, I, I understand where you're coming from. It does give me an opportunity for us to talk about it in some sort of a public forum, for people to understand what, what we're looking at, what we're doing from the professional aspect of it.
And Jeremiah, please know how much respect I have for you, your opinions in your office, and the odds that I'm going to overrule the county engineer's determination on an issue like this because somebody complained about it? I'm not.
Commissioner Davis, I don't think that at all, I appreciate that.
But the, the, the fact that they never even really knew it was happening before it happened? I, I, I'm, some feels a little off to me about that, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, typically, their first, their first knowledge of this happening would be when the, you know, the sign's going up saying, you know, X amount of days from now, there will be a traffic change.
Yeah, those changes happen every day all across America. I'll make a motion to it now. Motion dies for lack of a second. Next.
From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot P. A resolution authorizing the approval of a lease amendment, one with the Collinade MOB LLC for the Fairfield Department of Health.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. For Fairfield County Information Technology, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot Q. A resolution to approve the purchase of IBM equipment by the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners for Mapsys Incorporated under state of Ohio term contract number five-three-four-zero.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot R. A resolution to approve a reimbursement for sheriff costs for monthly rent paid to the Fairfield County Commissioners as a memo expenditure for Fund Number Twenty-Eighteen, Fairfield County Job and Family Services.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot S. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract buying between Fairfield County Probate Court and the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Move, uh, no, Probate Court, Resolutions S and T.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three-zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot U. A resolution to accept conditional acceptance of Phase One of the views at Pine Hills Estate subdivision.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. With Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot V. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer of Fund One-Zero-Zero-One.
Move Sheriff's Resolution VWXYZ.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three-zero. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot AA. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and major expenditure object category Utilities Fund Fifty-Forty-four and Fifty-Forty-six.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. Payment of bills, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Twelve Dot Six Dot BB. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for apartments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for December thirteenth at nine AM.
I'm going to ask that we go to the executive session on security first, and then come back for the personnel matters.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to the executive session to discuss security. In that session, I'd like to have all members of the Commission, County Administrator, County Administrator, Facilities, Representatives, and Representative from the Sheriff's Office. Mom isn't anybody. Sheriff, attorney, prosecutors.
Is there a second? I'll make a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner, who'd made it first, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
All right, we're going into executive session, we do not anticipate any activity coming out of executive session, hopefully all have a nice day.